That will matter. It will matter to people that have gathered here. I'm assuming, Lord, we don't know everything. So I ask for your wisdom. We ask for your wisdom to come into this room. We ask for your presence to be here, to lead us and to guide us. Every decision, every topic of discussion, it would be ordered in the right way, in the right heart. Lord, that we'll not just make decisions, but we'll make decisions based upon your wisdom and with a good intention for the people of our city and the surrounding area. And it does matter that we are here. It matters what we will do tonight. It can reverberate many, many days and years beyond this evening. So let it be like that. Let us have your wisdom direct us. We give you thanks. We are so grateful, so appreciative, that we can live here in this country and gather like this. Thank you. Put your blessing upon this meeting tonight. We ask in the name of Jesus, the Son of God. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the agenda.
So may.
Second.
Motion by Vice. The second one.
Commissioner Ainge.
Where at?
Oh, Linda. Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for you to call.
All right. Do it again. Everybody go.
Phyllis, we can't see very well either.
Do you want us to vote?
Is it not flashing?
Yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
Is that just my eyes or is that blurry?
Motion carries. Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Vice Mayor Harry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winerring. We're waiting. Motion carries. Item number three. Item number three, Commissioner's comments.
Hi, I have a comment.
Sure.
I received an email from a lady just before the meeting, a 68-year-old lady on a fixed income. And she seems to think like that the city commissioner is not doing enough terrain in spending. She had a complaint about property tax, and I explained to her that the city doesn't get property tax, but she also mentioned water and sewer. And the reason I'm bringing this up is for two reasons. One is I think that people like her and her circumstances are representative of a large number, the population in Shawnee. And also, we're getting ready to enter into our budget cycle for the coming year. And I'd just like to raise the awareness of people like this and to point out that when we make decisions on the budget, that we're affecting a great number of people. And I think we just need to keep in mind that if there is, even though every citizen in Shawnee is very important, that we make decisions that don't disproportionately give money to a small group of people, that we need to keep in mind the entire population of Shawnee and the effect that will have because there's not enough money for everything. When we spend money on something, we're taking money away from something else. So I just wanted to point that out, and I think that she's probably also going to be contacting the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner's comments. Not hearing anymore. I'll move to item number four, citizens' participation. Let me go over the rules. There's a three-minute limit per person. Not three and a half minutes, there's three-minute limit. And a 12 minutes on one topic. So let me just say the floor is open. If citizens, anyone from the citizen community would like to come and speak to us and make us aware of something, please feel free to come forward. Okay, no one coming forward then. I'll move on to item number five. Mayor's presentation of certificates of appreciation for disaster response and recovery. Mr. Lynch, you're in charge, I'm just following. Let me just read this, and I think they're all the same except the name, right? City of Shawnee in Oklahoma certificate of appreciation presented to Oklahoma Baptist University for the support they provided to the city of Shawnee during the response to and recovery from the May 19, 2001-3 tornado. Thank you so much. The next one here is for the Rotary Club of Shawnee. Mr. LaCorte, thank you so much for what you all did. You sure can.
I want to say that I appreciate this and kept it on as part of the Shawnee group, but also Rotary Club across the United States, which reached out, both in the faraway New Jersey, Texas, Kansas, Kentucky. We really appreciate your support, our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is to the Salvation Army Lieutenant Cannon. Thank you, sir. Next one is to Lowe's. Thank you so much. Gordon Cooper Technology Center. Shawnee Public Schools. East Central Workforce Investment Board. The Adidas Foundation. The United Way, I want to be counting what a big job you all did. D E K. Walmart. Citizens of Potomac Nation.
Give that to the chairman while he's here.
That's okay. This Potomac Nation disaster recovery effort is funded by State Department Sales and Analytics. He sees an error.
Item number six, discussion, consideration, and possible action on an ordinance amending Chapter Six, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee. Madam Attorney, would you tell us?
Just another in a long line of the recodification. Again, this one is primarily housekeeping. We, it's changing our definitions to match the state definitions. We are deleting the fees from the ordinance and moving those to a resolution. Again, the, our online code will have a hyperlink to all these fees. We want to make it clear that we're not going to put people under 18 in jail. That's in there, and we want to take that out. And the same thing with licensing fees for the retail dealers. There are also some other definitions, and we're moving them to make it more organized. Staff recommends approval, this one's really not significant. We have some more significant ones coming at our next two meetings. So we're going to have a lot to look at. Some are just reorganization like these, but some of them have pretty significant changes, and we'll be talking about those a little more.
Okay. Now, wait a minute. Anybody have any questions on this matter? Anyone? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter. Motion to approve. Commissioner Winerring, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Would you read the title, please?
This is an ordinance amending Chapter Six, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by providing that definitions are to be in accordance with state law, providing for the adoption of license fees, penalties, and occupational taxes. Our resolution of the city commission adding definitions, providing for setting the fines, effects of remuneration, prohibiting altering of the code. That's wrong, I'm sorry. That does not go. We have two things. Adding definitions, providing for severability, providing for complication, declaring emergency.
Okay. So, everybody ready to vote? Have any questions? Okay. That motion carried. Now, the emergency clause in this matter. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
Don't move.
Hang on, hang on, just a second.
Oh, hang on. Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry. Who was the second on this one?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winerring. Okay. We're ready to vote. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action on an ordinance amending Chapter 26, utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Mr. Nels.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. What I have on the agenda tonight is I'm wanting to get approval, and I'm wanting to get approval for the poly service lines as a material that we could use for the water service lines between the water meter and the city water main. Currently, it reads that it's copper only, and the city will maintain three foot outside the water meter. And a lot of times, it breaks right at that three-foot mark and where the homeowner ties on because we require that we have to have copper that three feet. So when they build a home, they'll go from the house to the meter, and then they'll make a connection and go three feet of copper. And currently, it's an approved material for the building codes for the state, and we'd just like to carry that over to our own ordinance.
Okay, questions?
Is it the PEX or is it the standard 40?
It's going to be the blue poly pipe. And we're going to have a copper, we're going to have the stainless steel inserts, and you know, the copper tube-sized fittings. We're going to have all the specs in the water line that's currently in the city utilities.
How long does it last?
Forever, probably. Unless someone digs it up.
Unless someone digs it up, okay. Any other questions?
I've got a question about the rates. Can you explain what it says sewer rates for residential customers?
I think that's going to be on number eight.
That's on a different one? Oh, okay. It was right below that. All right. I don't have any questions on that one.
Number, the sewer rates would be on number eight?
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it.
I believe it would be on number eight.
Okay.
Okay. We're on item numbers.
Number eight is the septic.
Yeah. That's lighter.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
It's on the resolution now.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Residential rates are not affected by this.
Okay.
Well, wait, we're not there to that. Let's deal with this one, okay?
She answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
This is a less expensive option for developers who are putting in homes. So it's approved as building code. You didn't mention that, but I wanted to make sure that Commissioner.
Of course, copper increases in prices and things, so this will be.
And we've got several specs that will be on our webpage at the point of follow-up, for instance.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm not hearing any more questions. Madam Attorney, would you read it, please?
This is an ordinance amending Chapter 26, utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by providing for setting the formula for determining charges, then for hauling of wastewater, providing for the use of polyethylene pipe, providing for pollution standards, providing for requirement to notify certain changes to the facility, providing for repeal, severability, complication, and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
I don't think we have a first and a second.
I'm sorry, I'm getting ready to. Okay. Do I have a first? Have a motion on this? Vice Mayor Harry? Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Okay, it's time to vote. Motion carries. I'm going to go a little slow here and let Ms. Phyllis get all that data.
Before we act on the emergency, is that those that are in the process maybe have already installed copper, then that's still acceptable? Right.
Yes, it's going to be an option. They can use copper or poly. But it's going to, we want to start with any new projects. So if the projects that are currently, have been already bid, they'll use what they bid. For any new projects, they can use either.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Move with Dr. Merzick's clause.
Second. Motion and a second by Commissioner Winerring. Let's just hang tight. Ms. Phyllis has got to get some bookkeeping.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. You have to tell us, okay.
Are we ready to vote?
We're ready to vote. Motion carries. Item number eight is discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution setting certain fees connected with the water and wastewater system. Mr. Nels, now, let's talk about this one.
What this is, it pertains to the septic haulers and our industrial users, or our industrial industries out there. The first one is, we are permitted through DEQ, and we have an excess BOD and TSS loading rate of 250 milligrams per liter. That's the sewage strength that we have to stay under before we can discharge it to the North Committee. Well, currently, there's verbiage in our ordinance that says we can charge a fee for industrial users or anybody that discharges waste if we choose to. And I want to utilize that and add a 35 cent per pound of BOD that's discharged to us. So we'll sample their waste, and anything over 250 milligrams per liter, we'll charge them 35 cents a pound. And that's usually an additional four to five, $10, depending on what they're giving us. Because we have to treat it, and we have to maintain that minimum discharge, and we feel everybody that discharges stuff should do that.
So they bring it down to you? That, and then we have to process it?
Process it and treat it and deal with it.
Okay. Other questions, ladies or any?
Is that, are you talking about just the ones that bring it in in tanks and the septic tank people? Is that what you're talking about?
Do they have any kind of permit with us that you?
That's state permission.
Yeah.
Well, we have each hauler that's permitted through us right now. They all have permits with this. Right, currently, this is our next, our number two. Currently, the fees for an annual permit is $0. We'd like to implement a $100 permit fee per truck per year. Apparently, we don't charge them any.
Okay.
And then our next one would be a $10 tipping fee per received load of septic. So if a guy comes 10 days, he drops our 10 loads in a day, we would charge him the 35 cents excessive BOD per load, and then we'll charge him $10 per tipping fee to dump. And then the next charge would be, within our current ordinance, we have outside commercial sewer rates that we'd like to utilize and bill that to them also. And that's per quantities. So I think right now, everybody in town pays a certain amount of sewer rate, zero to $1,000. After that, they pay an additional fee for a thousand plus. And currently, our septic haulers are only paying $10 per load per truck. And with our master plan that we're currently reviewing, they're going to suggest a pretty expensive septic hauler station at one of our sewer plants. And this will just be a small drop in the bucket to get some of that money back.
Can they currently go with that if they don't bring it to us?
I believe Donna sent out a map showing you of the locations around that do accept waste and the ones that do not.
Oh, that's on. Wait a minute. Yeah, it's here.
We're surrounded by cities that do not accept it. We're the only ones currently to do. And there's a little, we've got Tulsa rates in there and Oklahoma City rates and what they charge. And they even charge if a septic hauler comes after 5:00, there's an additional fee. You know, because you have your operators that'll stop what he's doing, he's got to open the gate, go out to the truck, watch the septic hauler discharge. And I think these fees will also help us. We're assuming that some of the haulers will fill up through the week, let it set all weekend, then bring it to us when it's real bad. You know, if they dump before the weekend, their strength of BOD might be as high, and they'll drop it off before they go home that night.
How many gallons in a load?
We have trucks that range from 500 gallons to a load, to I think 2,300 gallons.
Wow, that's a big truck.
Is there any reason why we are charging per load instead of per thousand gallons the way some of these other cities are?
Well, that's what this is, that's what this is for. I want to start charging per thousand gallons with our rate structure we already have in place.
So this thing that she's showing us is just a flat rate of $10 a load?
That's what we currently charge.
Okay, and wanting to change to what it says on here? Okay, on our, on our computer?
Yeah, yeah. And in the second page, those are actual numbers. Those are actual samples we took from the truck. And those are actual rates that we would charge with the tipping fee and the new sewer rate. So you could see $10 a load to what they will be paying is not a whole lot, and we're kind of in between Oklahoma City and Tulsa.
So they're not allowed to dump that out on private property now with the lime treatment and so forth?
They are, yeah. It has to be private property. I believe there was a septic business that was doing that, but I'm not sure if it's still closed or not.
$10 tipping fee, what's that now?
That's kind of like a.
Unloading fee.
An unloading fee. Conveniencey, because our operator will have to stop doing what he's doing, go open the gate, let him in, monitor him, and then it's convenience they get to tip and dump on us.
Okay, I'm looking at the resolution, I'm a little slow here, so if you'll be patient with me. It says a $100 annual permit fee, $10 tipping fee, and then 35 cents a pound over so many milligrams per liter.
Yeah. Yeah, and I believe on the second page on your printout there, those are actual real numbers of their strength that we sampled.
Oh, okay.
And there's a date that we sampled them, and it shows the excess fees. So it's like $3 and $4, depending on how big their truck is and how often they dump.
And that equates to per thousand gallon, so much per thousand gallon?
No, I believe their gallons is a little bit further up. Because we have the total gallons of the truck, is in there. One's 500 gallons, one's 2,300 gallons, the tank.
I guess I was looking for the charge per thousand gallons.
Oh, yeah, it's in there, it's a 2581. It's on the sewer, or it's in the.
Oh, it's back up in that other ordinance?
It's in the one you have right there, too, the printout in your hand.
Oh, the printout?
2531, isn't it?
Yeah, 2531.
Yeah, 2531.
Yeah, I've got the spreadsheet here, the same one that you guys have in front of you. And the first one will be the septic hauler, of course. And then that was the date, you see, 11/21 is the date that we took the BOD and TSS. And we sent that off to.
Hang on one second. Let Commissioner Ainge, okay. You got it now, Linda?
Well, yeah, but I was just looking at the resolution. I guess that doesn't need to be in the resolution, right?
Only the fees are in the resolution. That's, this is an explanation now.
Okay.
She's getting to it for each.
I got you. Okay. I'm okay.
So on number one, the septic hauler, you know, his name is there. And then we have the date that we sampled for the BOD and TSS. And we send those, we send that sample to a third-party lab that we use for our results in still water. And then his truck is 500 gallons for that particular truck. And then his actual BOD sample came back at 2,990 milligrams per liter BOD and 2,250 actual milligrams per liter for his TSS. So that gave him an excessive 2,740 milligrams per liter BOD and excessive 2,000 milligrams per liter TSS. And then he got his tank volume, this is his tank volume in MGDs, and then the 35 cents charge for the BOD and TSS excessive fee. And then that equates to $4 for the BOD and $2.92 for the TSS surcharge. And then, of course, the $10 tipping fee. And then our current rate, 0 to 1,000 for outside commercial, is 2531. And he didn't dump over 1,000 gallons, it's zero.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
So his total fee would be $42.23 instead of $10.
So it's comparable to the other cities.
Right. And if you go down there, so the bigger the tanks, the more excessive their BOD and TSS, the more they're.
So you actually have to send that test off before you make the final charge, is that?
Yeah, what we're wanting to do, we're wanting to take quarterly samples and then do a running annual average for their BOD strength. And every three months, we'll sample them when they're in the yard. We won't tell them we're going to sample. And then we may get a good one, and we may get a real strong one.
So would the BOD be higher, like if they held it over the weekend or something? Is that what you're saying causes that, why this would be so high, this one?
There would be a lot less oxygen.
Okay. Okay.
Have you told these customers that you're working on this?
We have, we have. Yeah, and we're going to sit down and have a meeting with them. We probably won't, we don't want this to really go into effect until, it may be April 1st. We want to give them time to adapt to it.
Any other questions, gentlemen, ladies? Any other questions, gentlemen, ladies? No other questions?
Let me give you one other piece of information, because this is kind of in the category. The residential water and sewer rates and the commercial water and sewer rates, the actual rates, will still be set by ordinance. They'll always be set by ordinance. The only thing that's going to come up in these fees will be this kind of thing, the kind of the extra service fees, the things that are out of the normal. But the actual charges like this one, I'm not sure where that was, but something in .2531, those will always be in an ordinance.
Well, this has been kind of an ongoing occurrence, meaning we voted back, or she let us know she's going to kind of clean up our act and get things where it would flow more smoothly. And I know it's been a project here that's been going on for some time, and I think we still have more, quite a bit more to come, so.
And I believe within this resolution, there's also a pH change that we would like to change in some ordinance. Currently, in our city ordinance, it says we can accept industrial waste with a pH of 6.5 to 12.5. Well, 12.5 is considered hazardous waste. And we are permitted through DEQ to only discharge a 9.0 pH. So, we think we need to set the industrials, the industries and the septic haulers to that same limit. But once you get, when you say you're accepting hazardous waste, you know, it's a whole new ballgame and we're not equipped to treat that kind of waste.
Very good. Very good. Okay. No more discussion? Okay, Chair, we'll entertain, do you need to read this, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a resolution setting certain fees connected with the water and wastewater system of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Agee, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harrod. Okay. Motion carries. Item number nine is acknowledged sales tax report received for February 2014.
Well, when I received the sales tax figures this month, I about had a heart attack because I have a calculation that goes back a year, and it says we were down $675,000. But then I remembered we had that one-time deal of $639,000. So, unfortunately, sales tax this month is down $37,322. The reports, I haven't really gotten to go through the reports. They usually come out about 10 days after sales tax, which I checked this morning, they were not there, so I can't really see what section, if it's retail or what is down yet. I expect them, I would say by Friday. So, next month, I'll be able to tell you. Hopefully, we'll be up next month. One thing this month, though, which is not on here, is use tax was up. We got a one-time deal, $92,000, and it had to do with the oil. It was a one-time deal, and so we got, instead of about $80,000, we got $182,000.
So, our regular sales tax, if you, that windfall that we had there for the $92,000?
That's...
In other words, we would have been down like $120,000?
No, no, no. That's use tax. That's different than sales tax.
Okay.
Use tax is the point of delivery.
Okay, so it didn't affect this?
No, but we did get, we usually get between $80,000 and $100,000, $80,000 and $90,000 every month for use tax. This month, we got $182,000 because of the one-time deal. And we're going to ask Oklahoma Tax Commissioner up there if they're going to take it back because remember last year, when we got the extra $639,000, we had to give $139,000 back. So, he said, no, we don't have to take it back.
Where did that come from?
Basically, what happened was is, you know, we've had pipeliners in our hotels and staying at our expo and things like that, and they've just waited to pay their use tax until they knew exactly how much pipe they were laying to the city limits.
Oh, okay.
That's a one-time deal, and we'll move out on that. Also on the dais, I put down top 10 revenues, I just said nine. We have the technical data that's coming out all purple and you can see it anyways on the screen. Sales tax is up 7.22% since 2011. Our overall top nine revenues are up over 5%. Right now, we have collected about 49% of our anticipated revenues, which is, we're actually ahead of the game because, I remember, like ONG, OGN, all that pays in arrears. So, like, this is through December. I haven't gotten, you know, I got December's money actually in February and some in January. So, we're right on target with budget. I also, in the dais, I also booked, I apologize not doing this last month like I tried to do at the end of each quarter, but I had to go to Florida for an emergency. This is the last, I've been tracking since March, the top five sales tax codes. The biggest increase we've seen is retail trade in December, but everything else has been trending pretty much the same with slight increases. This is just for information purposes only and, you know...
Why do you think the building permits are down 47% since 2011? Is there any explanation?
I got Justin a little bit about that just before meeting, and it's been slow, it's been very cold. But he does anticipate some good-sized building permits coming in. It's really a trend, I mean, if like development goes in, you get a lot of them. So, it's kind of, it's a timing issue.
Okay.
But I think we're going to exceed our budget for building permits issue.
Okay.
We know of two, which is what, about $40,000 and two between the two. We've got the timing. We're going to be right.
Any more questions? Thank you for bringing this to us. Item number 10 is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to read. Honestly, over the last month, the Hunt proposal consumed a lot of our time. I also want to thank particularly Justin Erickson and John Crywicky on my staff. They were very instrumental in helping close that deal and making sure that commissioners had numbers and that we quickly evaluated the traffic study and determined the impacts there. And I wanted to tell you guys, tell them thank you for their quick work on that. It helped make our decision much easier. We do have that proposal. It'll be, it was signed by Jeff Williams of Hunt Properties. They hope to start this project April 1st, right around April 1st or thereabouts. They do have permits in now that we're reviewing, so I think they're still on track to be open for the holiday season this fall, which of course is typically, you know, your largest sales tax generation type. So, we're working hard to make sure that we meet their deadlines, and you guys will be seeing for plant unit development come across your desk after the planning commission sees it, probably in the first meeting in March or the second meeting in March, so that they can get started. Next, during this period of time, I also attended the City Manager Association Winter Conference in Stillwater. Commissioner Harrod and I traveled to Oklahoma City to meet with our legislators to talk about legislative initiatives this year with the Midsize City Coalition last week, Wednesday. I think that was very good for us to be able to sit across the table from our legislators and talk to them about what our priorities are. One of the things that we're talking about is the state will potentially be funding some capital projects like the Capitol Building and roads and bridges and things like that. And we're not opposed to those things. We think they need to be doing those things. In fact, James and I talked about, you know, rolling back the income tax, you know, just keep our $60 and go ahead and get that capital fixed and get our bridges fixed and that type of thing, you know, us personally. But if they're going to go into other additional types of initiatives such as funding the Pop Center in Tulsa or funding the Heritage Center in Oklahoma City, Native American Cultural Center there, we want to be in on that. We want to be in on the economic development of the state and grow with it. So, we've all submitted projects that would rival what Oklahoma City or Tulsa would get in terms of dollars from a bond campaign or something like that. I don't know that they'll actually do fund those two projects during this year or not, but we want to be a part of that economic development and tourism if they do. So, our message is, yeah, we want you to do it, but if you do it, we want to be there with you and for our projects. So, Commissioner, I didn't know if you wanted to share any of that anymore from that meeting, but...
I was, excellent meeting. We had the people from the different communities there, so it was an excellent meeting. We did cover a lot of different things in that meeting, so that is well worthwhile and worth our time.
Pertaining to that meeting, just a quick question, is that, is it 1875 or something where we're going to get part of the tax money back?
Could get it back.
Could get, is that still, is it locked up and committed? Does anybody know?
I don't know exactly what the status of it is. I know our legislators are supportive of it. Commissioners, if you don't know what Mayor Maynard's talking about, that is a House Bill 1875 that is proposed to trim back our fees for collecting our sales tax, of course. I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of history on it. Some time ago, OML asked the City Manager Association and a lot of the cities got together, and we asked the Oklahoma Tax Commission what they were spending their, spending our dollars on. And if you don't know this, when we, every month when we get sales tax, the state of Oklahoma currently takes 1% off of that. For us, that's about $70,000, $80,000 a year. What we found out when we asked them what they were spending our tax dollars on is they told us that, they actually told us they were collecting $19 million, but they were only using 9%. So, basically, we, one of the legislators, I'm not sure which one it is, has proposed House Bill, a House Bill 1875, that would rebate us back half of that. So...
It'd be a 1%, it'd be a half percent.
Right. So, we would then see an additional $80,000 in revenue come to us throughout the year to decide how we wanted to handle it during the budget process and et cetera for the new budget.
I'm sorry to interrupt your report, but I just needed to know about that.
The tax commission doesn't employ the same number of auditors they have in the past. They have fewer of them, and they've gone through the reduction of staff, and then they've not come back and hired them, so then they have money left over. So, if they're not going to use it for that purpose, the cities feel like we should get it back.
Right. Just a quick note, the IAFF and IUPA Uniform Labor Unions here at Shawnee have notified us that they are looking to bargain. So, we began that process destroying by being amongst ourselves and talking about the things we'll be negotiating during this budget. Obviously, you guys saw the budget schedule. It's subject to change. I wanted to bring that up, that the department heads are now putting their needs in. And we operate on a, you don't lose it if you don't use it kind of a deal. I mean, the zero-based budgeting, we start from zero, and the departments tell us what they want and what they need. And if this year they need more training, we work to give them more training dollars in their budget, and maybe they don't need as much in fuel sales or something like that. But we're in the process now of identifying what the needs are, and we've got a schedule for the budget. And please, commissioners, if you guys want one-on-one time with Cindy or myself, please schedule that time so that we can begin to talk to you about what our needs are for the year and what our initiatives are. And if you have initiatives that you'd like to make sure get included into the budget, we need to know those now so that we can begin to prioritize those. So, just a quick note on that. Recycling, bins come out this week. There'll be a lot of media that's coming out that will help get our customers to understand. We're getting quite a few concerns about recycling at the, particularly at the water window. Phyllis may want to share some of that with you. But we felt like we needed to do some, maybe a little bit unconventional things to make sure that we get the word out to our citizens. So, you'll be seeing signs and flyers in your water bill and 15-second barbs at the movie theater and things like that to help try and get that word out. Because one of the things we want to make sure that we do is, we all know that landfill space is precious and that if we don't try to educate our citizens on pulling those things that can be recycled and used out of the trash, that will just fill up the landfills faster and end up costing our ratepayers more money down the road because landfill space becomes more precious. So, this is one of the ways that we can handle that.
Probably one of the most asked questions is, what are they going, what can you put in a bin?
So... It's a great question, and even my staff had a couple of questions about that this morning, but I thought my staff would be up on it more than our citizens would. So, it was a pretty good test of the fact that we needed to get that information out there.
Now, I may have read, and somebody, feel free to correct me, that it was going to say a printed something on that container. Did I read that?
There are several things that...
It's going to say on your container what you put in it.
When they set the bin at our customers' residence, there will be a little flyer at the bottom of the bin that tells them what we accept and what we don't accept. We'll also have those in the water bill. We've got them floating around here at City Hall for anybody who comes up to the window. And when Phyllis' staff talks to somebody at the window, they explain to them what the new process is and how they can save money or if they don't want to. But the basic, the basic, we're going to take tin cans, such as, you know, for a can of beans or a can of chili or something like that. We're going to take numbers one and two plastic, we're going to take newspaper, and we're going to take aluminum. But we're not taking glass or any other than those other ones. The glass is just not a commodity that can be then resold to make any money off of. It's really a money loser right now. That may change in the future. However, at the 45th Street location, you'll be able to take cardboard and glass to the 45th Street location if, since we're not taking it there, and they will manage that there. They just didn't want to have to handle the glass in a single source right now because it's expensive to buy the machines that sort it out. And unfortunately, our citizens will have this curbside, but citizens that have been using it that are not from Shawnee, that come into town to work or whatever, those recycling locations will go away. So...
So, independents will go away completely? And then just out at 45th will be the?
Glass and...
The glass and the cardboard?
And cardboard.
Or we can take our, we can also take our cardboard to Phase 7?
You may, yes.
Right.
And I will tell you that Central Disposal is using South Central Industries and Phase 7 to deal with the cardboard so that they can, and the recycling. They're going to bring as much of it as they can sort so that they can get it resold. So, there's a real win-win between our contractor and those nonprofit organizations that employ those kids that work on those products. So, it's really, it's really a good fit.
How many customers do we have? Trash collection?
I don't know, approximately? Phyllis, around 10,000?
11.
11,000?
12?
11.
11, okay.
Finally, it's TSET grant time that will, James mentioned this morning in his report to me, that we'll be looking to apply for the tobacco settlement money for another grant coming up. We'll of course need commission approval to go ahead with that, but I wanted to make sure that commissioners knew that that was coming up. And I'll be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have.
It's not a question, but I was at the senior citizen meeting this morning, and I just received a big award as a healthy, national health, healthy business award. It was really quite an accomplishment for them, so I thought that was really cool to see that they were doing that. And along with that smoking thing, are we getting, I know James is in the middle of it, there's a couple of other things that we were going to have to vote on.
We're in the process of...
Getting those put on the agenda to get that cleared up. Like, remember, one was you can't completely cover up your windows because of something?
James probably has a little bit more detail in there if you'd like to know.
No, we can get into it later, but I just want, I think there'll be more coming, right?
There were some ordinance things that we needed to do, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Item number 12, administrative reports, but including but not limited to non-accessory signs, Justin Erickson, Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, at the request of a city commissioner, I'm pleased to be here this evening and give you an update on where we are at present with billboard-type signs, which we refer to as non-accessory signs. An accessory sign is one that's accessory to an established business on a site. So, a non-accessory sign is a billboard-type sign that is advertising, that is unrelated to any activity that actually occurs on this, on that property. I know I've got some new commissioners here that were not involved in the process of when the ordinance was last updated, approximately two years ago, so I wanted to give a bit of background and some context. Previous city ordinance dates, I believe, to about the 1980s, and it allowed for billboard-type signs up to 672 square feet. It had three different spacing requirements, depending upon several different factors, but basically it allowed signs that were spaced apart anywhere from 250 to a maximum of 750 from one another. It also had a residential setback requirement that said you couldn't put a sign if it was at a location, if it was within 75 feet of a residentially zoned property. at a location, if it was within seventy-five feet of a residentially zoned property. Historically speaking, looking back at the, at the minutes from different meetings, there was some controversy that, that previous ordinance introduced and lots of discussion about billboards as the, in this community as there are in, in communities all over the country. And that led in two thousand and one to a moratorium that the city commission at that time put in place that forbid the issuance of any additional billboard permits. And that billboard moratorium actually was in place from August of two thousand and one until April two thousand and twelve, so approximately eleven years or so. In late twenty-eleven and early twenty-twelve, the city commission asked staff to revisit the issue of the moratorium, knowing that a moratorium is designed to be temporary and that we needed to make some permanent decision on the, on this issue, whether that be to not permit them at all or to permit them perhaps with some further restrictions. And so that process was started between staff and, and the planning commission. Ultimately, in, in the winter and, and early spring of two thousand and twelve, staff and the planning commission conducted their, their work and, and the planning commission held a public hearing, made a recommendation to the city commission that there'd be no allowances for billboard-type signs. The city commission then requested some limited options to allow for signs, but allow for signs under a more restricted capacity than was previously permitted. And so with that, in April of two thousand and twelve, ordinance two four seven seven was passed and it, oh, and that's what we're under today. That allows billboard-type signs under some restrictions. Some of those restrictions are as follows. There is a fat one-thousand-foot spacing requirement between signs, so you'll see a substantial, fairly significant increase over the previous ordinance. It also increased the residential buffer zone from seventy-five feet to five hundred feet. It required that they only be allowed on arterial streets, four-lane, major thoroughfares, and it limited signs to two hundred and fifty square feet where previously six hundred and seventy-two square feet was allowed. And those of you that were here may recall at the time, when the ordinance was discussed, staff prepared some graphics and a map that showed where the existing signs were. We have about, right around fifty billboard-type signs in town. And we looked at, based on the ordinance, where would additional signs be allowed to, to be placed and came up with probably about ten or fifteen locations that, that based on, on those new specifications where they, they may be allowed. Between two thousand and twelve and today's date, there's been three new signs that have been constructed within the city limits. There's some other signs that were constructed that you may think are in the city limits, but they're just outside either on Interstate forty or on Interstate, or on Highway one seventy-seven. The three that were approved in, in the city limits and constructed were two on North Kickapoo, immediately west of Shawnee Mall, and one on North Harrison, far north Harrison, about the eight thousand block, which is near the northern extremes of Shawnee city limits. And so that's what we've seen since the ordinance has been in place. There has been some discussion on whether or not additional changes are, are needed to the ordinance. So you of course have your own personal thoughts on whether or not you'd like to see billboards, billboard allowances be made or not. Staffs, because I, because I was asked for this report, I, I looked at it again as well and looked at some of the pros and some of the cons of the existing ordinance. I think in terms of the pros, as you can see, there's been just three signs that have been permitted and the regulations that are in effect today are much, much more stringent than were in effect previously. There are however, some things that could be done to, I think, strengthen it even further. There's some clarification that could be made, a little bit of vagueness in the current ordinance that I think is unfortunate. Some things that other communities have done too that, that, that I've seen more recently is some communities have identified specific corridors where billboard-type signs are allowed. So rather than just saying they're not allowed under these circumstances, they kinda take the opposite approach and say they are allowed under, under these circumstances, but only these specific corridors. And that would address some of the concern that I, I think some commissioners may have as sites are annexed or as, or as expansion occurs. For example, say the Bryan Street interchange and maybe some of the land along Bryan or as Kickapoo has improved from the spur north, but also hopefully eventually the spur south. There's, and as properties are rezoned and maybe that distance requirement from residential property becomes, it, it would allow them to, to say, construct a billboard where, where maybe we didn't envision that previously when the ordinance was adopted. So there are some different approaches we could take at this time if the commission would like to, that would, I think, strengthen it a bit more. And so before I go any further, I'd kinda like to open it up for questions and see if, and see if I could help shed any additional light. Of course, this is not an action item. If the commissioners, if you all do wanna make changes, I think there's a couple of approaches that we can take. We can keep the status quo, number one. Number two, we can, we can modify the ordinance to, to not allow billboard-type signs at all. Or number three, we could, we could make some changes to the existing ordinance. If, if that's something that you're interested in, I would recommend placing a temporary moratorium in, in place with a set date. Staff would come back to you and say in about sixty days with those changes so that we don't get into a situation previously where it was many years down the road. Certainly something that we don't wanna have happen in this case. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this topic.
Well, I'm the one that asked for it to be placed on the agenda and also to give the, just an opportunity to tell us how many signs have been permitted and so forth. I guess the worst ones that I'm catching flack on are out there on one seventy-seven, so I'm assuming those are not even in the city limits, aren't they?
Yes, no, so those are not, those are not in city limits.
So that's one of the two that, I mean, those two are the ones I'm catching flack on. And of course, on the billboards, I, I was probably one of the ones that wanted a stricter, didn't want, I wanted to lift the moratorium and, and wanted to place stricter requirements on it. And so I've been approached since then that maybe we don't need any additional billboards, but what I, you know, the reason I did that is the people that have billboards inside the city limits now have kinda a monopoly on the, on the billboards in the, in the particular areas, so they, you know, can charge what they want to and probably collect it for, for the billboard. So I don't know, any other commissioners, maybe we might wanna revisit a moratorium on that or instruct staff to do something differently. Because I, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I know that I'm catching some flack over from the certification people and other people about the billboards being placed in, inside the city limits, so.
So what you're saying is that you might bring us a recommendation for a temporary moratorium while you revise these codes to be a little more stringent or restrictive?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I agree with James. I just feel like, you know, some of these billboards are just, and I hate to tell you, there's like fifty or sixty between here and Oklahoma City and it just, it's not a decent sight on, we're not control of I-40, I understand that, but many cities, and when I drive down Harrison and I always see the sign that Newton Wall has built. It's such a classy sign, yeah, it tells who that is, you know, that company. And I, as you travel to California or wherever you go around the nation, you see more and more restrictions being put on billboards for the appearance of the city. So again, they can advertise, I guess, in the newspaper instead of on the board.
Well, I'm mindful when I was in New England a few years ago that there's one probably a mile from the Interstate ninety, sitting up on the hill and it's, I don't know, it's probably several hundred square feet, but you could see it, it's, you know, lit up and everything and night, you could see it from the interstate, but it was way to heck off the interstate. I mean, it was almost blinding coming down the interstate. So, but anyhow, I, I'd be one to suggest that we did come back with a, with a moratorium and try to take a look at that again if you don't, if it's not too much difficulty, if we could do that out of me either, too.
Okay. Very good. Staff, proceed as, as, as you wish. Thank you, sir.
That being a regular part of our normal agenda, then I'm gonna move into the Shawnee Airport Authority. And we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Herritt in a second.
Ready to go?
Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Our administrative reports?
No administrative reports, sir.
Okay. That being said, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and I'll call order the municipal authority. Shawnee Municipal Authority, item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Smith. Item number two is consider bids, repair and restoration of the riverbank failure.
This is from that flood, isn't it? Is this from that flood?
River's behind us.
We have to...
We have to ask for work.
Wow.
Should we ask that question?
Good evening, Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor.
It's not a good evening when you lay this in front of us.
About the bids for the repair and restoration of the riverbank failure that happened earlier this year after we had that large tornado and we had the big floods in May. I believe our, our engineers' estimate was around two hundred thousand dollars at that time. So I'm gonna go ahead and read these bids in the, in the record. First bidder would be Onyx Services Incorporated, Incorporated out of Kingwood, Texas. His bid was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The next bidder would be Brewer Construction out of Oklahoma City for the amount of two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We had Simron Construction out of Oklahoma City. His bid was one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. We had CP Three Enterprises out of Mott, Oklahoma. He had a, he had a bid of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. We had a Reed Dozing Contracting out of Sheldon, Missouri. He had a bid of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. We have a bid from RRY Services out of Stillwater, Oklahoma. His bid was one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars and ten cents. We had Downey Contracting out of Oklahoma City. He had a bid of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. I'd like to defer the award to the next commission meeting to give us time to look over the bids and at that time we'll probably make a, make a recommendation.
I have a quick question. Say we spend a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever you, you know, we do here. Number one, is that money of any help from FEMA over this flood thing that we've had? Is, is there funds there?
We may have, I think we've received around fifty-five thousand from...
Toward, toward this project?
Toward this project.
And are, is there more funds to come maybe, you think? No?
We, we had money budgeted to clean the pond out for that, for this year and then the pond failed, so we have money for that.
Okay. My next question is, will another ten-inch rain, I mean, if we're doing this repair, or I don't know how long big that rain was, if we have another one like that, will we be right back where we are now or is something being, it's being built here to prevent that from occurring again?
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a five-year maintenance bond on this project. It's been engineered, it's been approved by the Corps of Engineers for the installation, so it's gonna be, it's gonna hold up.
Now, we just have one pond that...
Yes.
And, and we don't have another pond that could get washed away?
There are two right next to each other.
Right, that's what I thought.
The one that failed was the one that was closest to the...
But we're not reinforcing the other one?
Oh, it's too far away.
This one would, we'll get you an arrow photo.
No, that's fine. No, no, I just...
This would keep the, stabilize the bank for all of that area back there.
Okay. Okay.
I'd maybe defer this item to the staff.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Herritt and a second by Commissioner Winteringer that we might turn this over to the staff. Let's vote. Motion carried. Any new business at Shawnee Municipal Authority?
No new business or administrative reports, sir.
Okay. That being said, I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority and I'll adjourn our commission meeting. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for coming.